I'll sit. Okay. Could we call a meeting to order? I'm going to ask the Cub Scouts to come forward and help lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance, if that's okay. Don't you guys come up here?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Great job. Okay, first on the agenda, public announcements. Kevin, you had a public announcement.
I did, Mr. Chairman. If I could, the Board of Directors and the Chief Executive Office of the South Shore Tri-Town Development would like to cordially invite, I've already invited members of the Board, but also to the people of Abington, to a memorial garden dedication ceremony on Saturday, November 10th at 9:30 a.m. on the premises of the former Naval Air Station at South Weymouth, at the Southfield Town Green, to honor the service and memory of Marine Sergeant Andrew K. Farrar Jr. of Weymouth, who was killed in action in Iraq, Marine Lance Corporal Walter Gator O'Hare of Rockland, also killed in Iraq in 2007, Sergeant Farrar was killed in 2005, and Army Specialist Matthew M. Polini of Rockland, who was killed in action in Iraq also in 2009, all having died in the service of the United States of America. And the idea is, the day before Veterans Day, to provide a memorial garden dedication for these true American heroes who happen to live in the three host communities that comprise the South Shore Tri-Town, and to give some fitting remembrance, not only of them, but some comfort to their families, that they can have a place to go at a former military installation. And it is my hope, I asked this before the Rockland Board of Selectmen, October 1st, and I would ask it to the people of Abington, that if you could give a few minutes of your time on Saturday, November 10th at 9:30, we do have, I've invited and have confirmed that the Marine Brigadier General, William Mullin, who is President of the Marine Corps University from Quantico, Virginia, will be present, Major General Scott Rice, who is the Adjutant General of Massachusetts National Guard, the Secretary of Veteran Services for the Commonwealth will be a speaker, and we do have Bishop John Doerr from the Archdiocese of Boston will begin the opening prayer, and the pastors of the two churches where all three were buried from, Holy Family, Father James Hickey, and Father Eugene Sullivan from St. Francis Xavier will also participate, and we're waiting word now on congressional delegation as well as perhaps even Senator Kerry. So, I would be hopeful, I know the members of the Board, some have already indicated that you would be there, and I would ask the people of Abington, if you could take a few moments of your time on Saturday, November 10th, to come over and truly do homage to these three young gentlemen, one, they, each ages were 20, 21, and 30. So, they gave the ultimate sacrifice, and we're hopeful that we can give remembrance to them and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a press release from the Police Chief, David Majewski, regarding Halloween. The Abington Police Department has announced that the hours for trick-or-treat in the town of Abington on Halloween are from 4:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. The Abington Police Department encourages residents to shut off outside lights after 8:00 p.m. to reinforce the hours that were established with safety in mind. Parents should also make sure that their children are aware of the candy deadline in advance. All parents should have a discussion with their children about respecting other people's property, and most importantly, adhering to the following safety tips. Adults should accompany young children. Older children should trick-or-treat in groups of at least three or more. Parents should clearly know the trick-or-treat route that their children would be taking. Children should only trick-or-treat in familiar and well-lit neighborhoods. Children should wear costumes that are light-colored or garbed with reflectors. Children should not wear masks or use makeup that interferes with proper vision or hearing. Children should carry flashlights with new batteries or glow sticks. Children should not carry hard plastic or wood props such as daggers or swords. Substitute with foam rubber, which is soft and flexible. Adults and children should watch for traffic at all times, even on side streets. Remember that Halloween is on a Wednesday night this year. Motorists should drive well below the speed limit up to an hour before and after the posted trick-or-treat hours. Trick-or-treaters should go to all the houses on one side of the street before they cross the street to the houses on the other side. Do not zigzag back and forth. Trick-or-treaters should stay on the sidewalks, driveways, and walkways to avoid ruts or holes on the lawn. Trick-or-treaters should not accept unwrapped or unpackaged candy. Parents should inspect all candy before anything is eaten. Parents should also be aware that the Abington Police Department has requested that Abington's store owners not sell any of the following products to children under the age of 18 from October 28th until November 1st. I actually don't have a copy of the list. Does anybody have a copy of that list? I think it's eggs and shaving cream.
Yeah, egg shaving cream.
Whip cream, I think, maybe. The other announcement we have is that the Abington Lions and Friends present the Not So Scary Woods again at Island Grove Beaver Day Camp on Saturday, October 20th. The rain date is Sunday, October 21st. They're asking you to bring a book to donate. Events from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. include Not So Scary Hay Rides, Halloween Costume Contest, Not So Scary Movie, face painting, a number of activities going on. Hot Dogs and Hawk Coco will be on sale on the Lions' trailer, and again, that's on Saturday, October 20th, with a rain date of Sunday, October 21st. Does anybody else have any announcements? Tom?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say the citizens of Abington, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, offered their congratulations to Jim Kelleher, who is our head football coach. He was honored yesterday by the Abington Alumni Association as the 2012 Alumnus of the Year. And I just would like to say that, for those that don't know Jim, you know, for me, it was very rewarding. Jim served the children of Abington for over 36 years, a dedicated career up at Abington High School as a mathematics teacher, and he's been the head coach of the Abington football team now for 39 years, achieving many milestones, including 218 wins, eight South Shore League championships, two Super Bowl teams. He was named as the New England Patriot Coach of the Week for his 200th victory over Bishop Fionn. He was inducted into the Massachusetts High School Football Coaching Association Hall of Fame to join two other Abington residents, Bob Bancroft, longtime coach of Whitman Hansen, and also Walter Pasta, who was the coach of Abington for many years. And last, but certainly not least, the Boston Globe on September 5th named the Abington Football Program as one of the top 10 Eastern Mass high school football teams of the century, with a winning percentage of 78% and 100 wins during this time period. So, a shout-out for Jim and his coaching staff and the football team.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else? We do have a special town meeting for those who are listening. October 29th, 2012, 7:00 p.m. at the Abington High School. If everybody could try to get there a little bit early to get checked in, so we can get going right at 7:00. And now, Jan Prowl from the Tricentennial Committee, I think, is going to give us a wrap-up report on the Tricentennial and all the events that took place throughout the year. Will you, Jan?
I'm very fine. Thank you for inviting us. Letting us give you a little bit of an overview. It could take a really, really, really long time, but we've got the condensed version. The biggest thing, basically, is we started in 2010, as you know, so it's been just a little over two years. We wrapped up with the Civil War encampment and rededication on the weekend of September 21st to the 23rd. That was kind of the final of everything that we've done. We are in the process of, and I've been just as busy as I was before, and so have other members of the Commemorative Book Committee, we just got that to the printer today. So, it'd be great if we could have it by the end of the month or the beginning of November. It's a real tight timeframe, but the book will be amazing. I think it really captures the essence of what we have done in the past, a lot of history, and the 30 for the 300th, the student project within the three towns, the kids that were chosen to be published in our book, their artwork will be in there. We have another 48 pages of all the activities we've done since January of 2011. There's some little picture or something in there, and a lot of pictures to do as we get a little further on with the parade and the muster and, you know, the encampment and some of that stuff, too. So, it's been, it's been an incredible journey. And the thing that's really interesting with this is that, from a committee of 13, we ended up with another 16 events committees. So, it wasn't just the 13 of us, because many of us were also on one, two, three, more of those events committees also. And we also had Kathy Bailey as the liaison to the schools. So, she had gone into the schools and given presentations and things there also. So, it wasn't just a committee that came and met and just got things done. Many, many, many volunteers, I mean, countless volunteers. You figure 16 committees, and the field day was probably the biggest one, there was at least 125 to 150 volunteers that day, including all the teenagers from TAB at the library, the Teenage Advisory Board, they were all there. So, it was, it was an amazing amount of volunteers that day. So, it was a lot of hard work, not only preparing for the events, but doing the fundraising for the events. So, our biggest shout-out goes to our sponsors and a donor, every donor, you know, kids that gave, you know, what they could and change, everybody from a dollar, the St. Patrick's Day parades, one brought in over $1,300, one brought over in $1,400, just from us walking in the parade, Jim Kane and his grandkids, just walking in the parade and everybody just making a donation. So, there was unexpected money that we didn't, you know, didn't know was coming in. So, the events were amazing, from a couple of trivia nights to the golf tournament that we did last year, to the house tour last year. This year, we really kicked off, after the trivia night, we really kicked off with the gala. It was amazing. And from then on, we had planned this year to do something every single month, and due to the generous sponsors and donors, we were able to make it minimal-cost event, but most of them were a no-cost event. So, that's a hats-off to the town, to every sponsor, every donor, you know, and they, we raised just under, I think it's just over, actually, $209,000. And we did this all our own. I mean, it was a lot of fun, but again, we couldn't have done it without the volunteers. So, I got a couple of, I want to see how sharp you are with what we have.
Oh, geez.
So, if they don't get it, we're going to ask you folks.
These guys can, you guys listen up here.
Couple of trivia questions here, this is just kind of to throw something in it, rather than go on and on about every event, because everybody was there. The Tricentennial had two platinum sponsors. Name one or both. Platinum was the $10,000 sponsor.
Abington Bank?
Abington Bank is one of them. Anybody know the second one?
Maybe. I think it was Cape Cod.
Cape Cod Lumber. One and two. Good job.
Good job, good job to them.
Yes, yes, yes. Great job to them. Thank you, thank you. Abington Bank and Cape Cod Lumber are platinum sponsors. Earlier this year, and Ken, you can't answer this, what was on the Trukey's plastic grocery bags?
Picture of Mr. Franny?
They actually printed our Tricentennial logo on their plastic bags and our website that was on for, I don't know, several thousand of the plastic bags that they have.
We always get paper.
I'm sure the kids can answer this one. What interrupted the old Abington country field day?
Thunderstorm.
Yes, it did. We call it a pesky.
Oh, I'm sorry. Whoops.
We called it a pesky thunderstorm.
Like they said, kids.
I answered.
Let's see if anybody can get this one. What is on the billboard across from the old farmer's market on Route 18 heading north to Boston?
Somebody told me about it, but I don't know what says.
Happy.
Try it, John, you know.
Happy 300.
I got the bill for it.
Is it a picture of the eagle on the bridge?
It's, actually, it's, you're very close, it's part of it. It's actually the entire Island Grove Bridge. Up in the upper left-hand corner is the Abington 300th logo, and at the bottom, it says 300 years and growing.
Oh, nice.
And we put that up there, because the backside of the billboard basically gets blocked a little bit by the buildings, so the gentleman doesn't like rent space for that, because nobody wants to rent it. So, the, we'd probably, probably be up there for a couple of years, at least. We just paid for the materials, so it's, so it's up there. So, I'll throw out another one. Let's see, what do we have here? Okay. How long is a half marathon? And what did the runners have to cross on the last leg of the race? You can answer one or both.
13 miles, something, but...
Yeah, something, yeah.
13 miles, something.
Island Grove Bridge.
Yes, they did.
13.1.
It is 13.1 miles, and on the last leg, they had to go across Island Bridge, the Island Grove Bridge. They had to climb the stairs.
Some guy named Jim, he's swimming.
Yeah, but, and just another, another quickie, if you were watching the parade, who was riding in the Wells Fargo stagecoach?
Frank Genowitz and his wife and daughter.
Yep. They were riding in as the Chair of the 300th and also the Chair of the 275th. Frank and members of his family that could squeeze into the Wells Fargo stagecoach were invited to do so. So, there's just some fun things. But, basically, we had nothing but a year of exciting events. The firefighter's muster was so successful, they'd really like to make it an annual event, and everything...
I heard the same about the half marathon, that there were a number of people who would like to see that.
That's the same thing. And the interesting part about that, because it's some of the part in the, in the history here, there's really a little bit of a nice tidbit with the, because Al Donaghy gave me this, the 13.1-mile route wove through the historic towns of the Abington, Rockland, and Whitman, there were 200 finishers, 103 women and 97 men, which they said, picture that 100 years ago, it would have absolutely been the reverse, you probably wouldn't have even seen any women. But there's one really unknown fact that, it'll also be in the Commemorative Book, it says, "After the race, a special hat-trick award was presented to Richard Dick Karns of Norton, who had been given bib number one. In 1962, at the age of 15, Dick ran Abington's 250th Road Race with the Abington High School Track Team. He returned again in 1987 to run the 275th Road Race. Dick finished Abington's Tricentennial Half Marathon 50 years later, at the age of 65, with a time of 2 hours, 21 minutes, and 45 seconds."
Wow.
So, that was kind of a nice, nice little bit to find out from Al, that there was something special. But, again, we could go on and on, there's pages and pages and pages of, you know, things that we did, and it'll all be put together in a 300th memoirs, if you want to call it, or keepsakes or commemoratives at the Dia Memorial Library, so 100 years from now, you all can go take a look at it. But, it's been an amazing journey. We, we worked hard, and we're very grateful for the opportunity, you know, from the Selectmen from the town.
The town is very grateful to the whole committee, because you guys did an outstanding job on every event, honestly.
Well, that's, I've heard...
Everyone just kept getting better and better and...
They did, and I think having it at Island Grove and the encampment run by people that live in Island Grove, and the lantern tour that night with the bridge all aglow and...
It was beautiful, yeah.
It's, it's, it was an amazing thing, and they pulled it off, and Rob and Deborah, who, they arranged the whole encampment. They are the Civil War reenactors. They've done many, many, many of them for years and years and years. They never organized their own. They organized that whole thing, and they actually would like, if we could keep this in mind, when the arch is restored, they'd actually like to be invited back to do another encampment after it's done.
Right.
So, we'd like to put a plug out there for that, and hopefully, we can get some town support behind that to cover, you know, some of the costs and stuff like that. But that would be, you know, down the line to kind of, so many people would want them to come back. I think we had about, we figured there was about 1,000 people there on Saturday night for the lantern tour. It was packed. It was absolutely packed. So, it was a great way to, great way to end it in history, in Island Grove, a place in our backyard that is so historical. These guys should learn as much as you can about Island Grove and look out for the 325 and the 350th, because it's going to belong to you. But thank you again for everything.
Thank you, Jan. Thank you. Okay, and to public appointments, 6:35 p.m., we have Jim Pazerski, Weeblo's Den Leader of PAC-11. Jim, how are you? Do you want to come up? And this is for a Cub Scout discussion regarding the structure of government.
I wanted to thank the Town Manager and the Board of Selectmen for hosting the Weeblo's One from PAC-11 Abington. And as part of their journey in citizenship, they have the opportunity to learn about their local government and what their, what their government role is, and we'd like to take this opportunity for the Town Manager and the Board to talk about just some of the things that they do, and then the boys have some questions for you following that.
You had something prepared, John?
I'll, I'll start off. The, the United States has four states that are considered Commonwealth states. Does anyone know what those four states are? We live in one here, which is called Massachusetts, and there are three others. The three others are Kentucky, Virginia, and Pennsylvania. Some may also argue that Puerto Rico, although it is not labeled a state as a Commonwealth state, constructively practices the Commonwealth method of democracy. And that goes back to the Revolution, the Revolutionary Times, when there was this deep-seated Puritan ethic that everyone was responsible for their own destination, their own beginning, their own way of life. And all of them, really, in the beginning, pulled themselves up by their own bootstraps and formed their own government. The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is modeled, was the model for the U.S. Constitution. And that goes back to when the country was, was first founded, and Boston played a tremendous role in that. When we talk about Commonwealths, we talk about individual cities and towns who are all in control of their own local destiny as it relates to their form of government, and the bylaws and the statutes that they actually passed at town meeting. And town meeting is interesting, because that is the truest form of democracy that we know today, where any citizen who's a voter of Abington can come to a town meeting and voice their concerns or voice their opinion on a particular warrant article. And actually, the town meeting is the appropriating body. The Board of Selectmen are the executive branch, the Town Manager is the administrative branch, you have a school committee and a school superintendent, which I'm sure you folks are well aware of. And we basically account for all of what we do through the appropriation process, which is in the hands of the residents of the, of the town of Abington. And twice a year, in the spring and in the fall, we all gather and we pass a budget, which is the operating budget for the city, I mean, excuse me, the town, and as well, some, in the fall, we also do what is called a capital plan. So, we fund some capital items, we also fund the operating budget, and we also do debt exclusions or, and those debt exclusions are large capital items. We may have a couple of those coming up pretty soon. So, this is a government that is really by the people, and it's really for the people. And you are the beneficiaries of this form of government in the future. So, it's good that you're getting to know this form of government, and also to know that there are departments that really report to the Town Manager and have a dual responsibility with boards and committees that report to, you know, the Board of Selectmen. Every, most, every committee in town is elected. The Board of Selectmen's elected, the school committee is elected, and various boards in town are all elected. And those individuals really take part in how the government actually runs. The Board of Health, and we have the Board of Health Agent here tonight, the Board of Health is a board that regulates the health and welfare of the residents of Abington. They, they look out for the restaurants in town, they, they inspect those restaurants twice a year. They, they also are involved with the triple E virus notification as to the health and welfare of the community. They pass ordinances that are basically part of the code that the Board of Health lives by. So, they're a very powerful board, and then there's the Board of Assessors, who really assess the property value that your mom and dad pay in taxes. It really isn't a pleasant thing from time to time, as they go up, but they obviously, they do get assessed, and everyone gets assessed fairly inequitably. And then you have a Town Clerk, who really is a keeper of records for the town. You need your birth certificate, you need to vote, you need to do anything that involves a public record. The Town Clerk has the issue and authority to do that, as well as to swear people in who assume office, like the Board of Selectmen were sworn in when they assumed office, when they won election, to sit on this board. Same is true with any board or committee that's elected or appointed, as well as a school committee. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of involvement by the residents of the community, and that really is the shape and form of the government that we know here today. And all of this takes on the characteristics of the membership from each of those boards and committees, and it guides the town through the government process. So, hopefully someday, all of you would be interested enough to give back to your community what you feel your community has given you. And that's really the motivation where most of the volunteers, like the 300th Tricentennial Committee, and others gain their motivation in providing a service to the town. And if we had to pay for all the services that our volunteers provide, we'd never be able to afford it. So, they play a very interesting and somewhat important part in the development, growth, and direction of the Abington community as a whole, so...
Great, thank you. Now, you guys have some questions? Who has a question? Want to come up here and, so you can get on TV?
Forget that.
Come on up here, right up to the podium there.
Please.
This is how, if, this is how, if somebody wants to address the Board of Selectmen, this is what we do, we have them come forward, they have to state their name and address. Why don't you give us your name and address?
I just want to ask the question.
Huh?
I just want to ask the question.
I know, but give us your name and address.
Nicholas Schultz and...
That's fine, Nicholas Schultz, okay. What's the question, Nick?
Okay. Okay. How, how late do you stay up and how do you manage to do it? It only worked for a minute there. That mic only worked for...
You mean as far as when we have our meetings? Or every night?
How late, all day and every minute, do that, please?
Well, this is, we, we're all part-timers here, so we meet once every two weeks, and we meet at 6:30, and sometimes we get out of here at, if we're lucky, 7:30, right, Kevin?
Actually, if I could ask you...
Yeah, you go ahead.
I, I actually get up real early in the morning, like 4:00, so usually, I'm going to bed about 8:00 or 8:30, believe it or not. I never thought I'd ever live to see, say that day. So, when we start a meeting, and everybody likes to talk and talk, I'm the one that usually tries to get them to move along, so...
Because it's past his bedtime once we hit 8:30, but, I mean, I don't know, our meetings generally go till about 8:30 or so.
We were here till 12:30 a couple months ago.
1:00.
Yeah. But that's, that's unusual, but it does happen every once in a while, so...
We have, if you've ever watched us on TV, ever seen, this is a local station on TV, and if you haven't noticed, there's part of the meeting, when the Town Manager gives his report, they usually have the camera on the Town Manager, and then if it happens to slip over to the Board, it's like when you notice we're all asleep.
Who else? You had a question there, right? You want to come up? What's your name?
My name is Dylan Schofield. I live on 528 Summer Street, and how, how many changes have you, oh, wait. Come on!
Leave it alone, it's automatic, it's okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
How, how long have you been managing?
Then on the board? Each one?
This is directed to...
Oh, to John, okay.
Yeah. How long?
In this town? I've been managing since April of, April 27th of 2010. My contract is up April 26th of 2013. But I've been in public sector life all my life, 31 years in public service, I've managed other communities other than, than Abington. And really, Abington has got a structured government that allows for professional managers to manage the town on a day-to-day basis, with the guidance of the Board of Selectmen as the executive board.
And how many changes have you made?
Oh, boy. How many changes have we made? I think we've made, you know, quite a few changes in the time that I have been here. Some of them have been controversial changes, but some of them have, I think, all change is very difficult for people to accept and understand, and usually, residents are very good about accepting change and working with it. We've changed to a new trash program, which I think we're going to talk about tonight. We've eliminated private contracts that were once... We've eliminated private contracts that were once issued to, you know, employees, and we established a, and updated the bylaw with the help of the Board of Selectmen. We kept the Folio School open, working with the superintendent of schools. We've balanced three, I balanced three budgets here since I've been here, and we've put, we will put little over $1.16 million into stabilization at the Fall Town Meeting. So we've made some changes financially to make the structure work better, integrated, to allow everyone to know what the finances are of their particular departments. And, you know, we're looking to discuss the possibility of building a new school or renovating an existing one. And we're going to be closing the landfill in the next couple of years. But the changes that we have made, I think, overall, have been somewhat difficult at times, but very rewarding in the sense that, at least I get satisfaction knowing that the direction that we're going in is a good one, you know, for the town as a whole. And I live by the, the simple model, model of you inherit a community as a manager. And I've inherited Abington as a community. And it's my drive, my motivation, and my desire to leave it better than, than when I accepted it. So it's a legacy to pass on to the next manager, the ability to improve government from whence I came. So when I came in 2010, we implemented a series of changes, some of which need to still happen. But in the end, we're hoping, I'm hoping, that this town will be better off than when I came. So those are the types of changes that we make. Some are visible and some are not that visible.
Great, thank you.
I think the kids can see now why we fall asleep when...
Oh, geez. Let me, you already asked one, right? So let me see if anybody else has any. What's your name?
Timothy.
Timothy, okay. How are you, Timothy?
Good.
Good, what's your question?
Does everyone here live in Abington?
Does everybody here live in Abington? We all, as members of the Board of Selectmen, we have to live in Abington. Mr. D'Agostino?
I live in Mansfield.
Lives in Mansfield. And Mrs. Jamison lives in Abington.
Okay.
Okay, great. Anybody else? Did you have another one there? Did you have one more? This is like town meeting.
Who are you going to vote for?
Oh, Jesus, bro. Anybody want to answer that one? No, but no takers. I'll tell you who I'm voting for. All right. What do you want me, which office are you looking for? President or Senator or President? I'm going to vote for Mitt Romney. Anything else?
Andy, what's Mitt's first name?
Willard. Willard, Willard Mitt Romney. Is that it? Did you have one there, buddy? Come on up, Ryan. Ryan, is it, Ryan or Brian? Ryan, come on up, Ryan.
You can finish by saying, "My name is Ryan and I approve this meeting."
Go ahead, Ryan.
What is the difference between a Town Manager and a Mayor?
Difference between, you want to take that one, John? No, you probably shouldn't.
Yeah. Well, one's elected, one is usually appointed.
Which one do you think is elected, Ryan?
The Mayor.
That's right. So he gets elected by the, the people of the town or the city, and the Town Manager gets appointed by the Board of Selectmen.
Who get, who get elected by the residents of the community. So there, there's a level of accountability. And I think the Mayor, depending upon the structure of government, and there are many different structures, usually they're very, they appoint everybody, and no one else is really elected in, in those structures of government. So you'd vote for, like the School Committee, if it, if this was a city where it had a population of X number of people, you would want to look at a mayor form of government. And you would elect a mayor, but he would, he wouldn't be electing Town Clerks and, you know, various boards and committees, all of which would be appointed usually by the Mayor. So it's a very...
Centralized.
Centralized government position. Little different than what we have here. And the, and the Town Manager is appointed by the Board of Selectmen and usually serves, you know, based on a level of education and expertise in, in government. One might be a popularity vote, and the other might be a vote by appointment.
That's a good question, very good. Thank you. Yes, last one, okay. What's your name, pal?
Nathan.
Nathan, how are you?
Good.
Good. What's your question?
After your shift, shift is over, have you ever walked to library and rent a book?
Well, we're usually, the library's usually closed by the time we're done here, so, I have not done that.
Actually, before my, before the last meeting, I spent an hour at the library just reading over my notes, so I go to the library beforehand sometimes.
Yeah, makes it convenient for us, though, yeah. That's a good question, thanks. Okay. Great, thank you.
My name is Jake and, um...
How are you, Jake?
Hi. And how do you pay for the schools?
How do we pay for the schools? All the taxpayers pay for the schools. All the taxpayers in the town, they get assessed a real estate tax, and that helps pay for the schools. And then we also get some money from the state government that gives us some assistance to pay for the schools. Anybody else, is there? You have, one more? Okay. What's your name? What's your name? Yeah, go ahead. No? All right. No problem?
Next.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Thanks, guys. Great job.
Nice job.
Thanks for coming.
Very good questions.
You're welcome anytime. That cleared the room.
That was a good thing to do.
That was, that was nice.
That was nice.
That was very good, yeah, yeah. Nice group of guys. Okay, thank you.
We'll see you later.
Okay, 6:45, we have Sharon White from the, the Health Agent for the town. She's going to give us an update on the automated trash collection.
It's a pretty tough act to follow.
Yes. You don't have any tough questions?
I have a piece of trivia for you folks, speaking of that. Do you know who started the first health department in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
Paul Revere.
Good job. Did, did any of you know that besides Ken?
I thought you were at the library looking up the...
Yes, exactly. People want to be ahead of time.
Massachusetts is the first state to ever have a department...
Kenny grew up with them.
Yeah. What I did for you folks tonight was to give a list of information, not in any particular order, but regarding our new trash program that officially started August 1st of this year. As of October 12th, we have issued 50 96-gallon recycling toters to residents. They have requested us to go out and assess that they, you know, are really recycling to the max, which is the best thing we want to see happen, and based on that, we have issued them larger toters. We also, after the initial distribution that was done the last two weeks of July for the recycling and trash toters, we have issued approximately 86 more pairs of toters to either missed addresses or in-law apartments that weren't assessed on the assessor's list that we originally had. We have also had six residents purchase additional trash containers. We've had, this is a list of the, there's very few of all the ones that we've had, but one squash recycling container was hit by a, a vehicle. We've had one stolen trash container and one stolen recycling container, and when a resident calls up to notify us that one of them have been stolen, we have to have them go down and log a police report before we issue a new toter to them. We've had one toter that was, quote, "rodent eaten." It's on display in my office, if any of you want to see it.
Squirrels, I told you about.
A good set of teeth, whatever this rodent was. I don't know if it was a squirrel or a mouse or a rat or what. We've had the Trash Compliance Officer, Lorraine, who's done an incredible job of helping out residents and keeping up with the requests for larger recycling toters, has said to me that residents are constantly saying to her that they've never recycled this much in their life. So that's been a really, really positive reflection on the program. Residents have appreciated the larger size for their recycling containers, they appreciate, and I do too, from just driving around town, I'm sure you will too, how neat the toters look. We don't have seagulls flying over them as much, I don't know if anyone ever saw that, but I did see a few, or as far as squirrels or dogs getting into the garbage. We did meet last week with the manager from Waste Solutions who informed us there had been a two-ton drop per day in trash and a one-ton increase per recycling per day in a 21 calendar day cycle. As far as residents getting rid of the old trash barrels and recycling bins have been dealt with very successfully, the compost site had adopted the program for reusable bins and barrels. We've given out 64-gallon recycling toters for Universal Auto, the Community Rail Office is in Monroe Street, Dyer Library, and there's been a total of four to five businesses that have requested to use recycling toters, which is a benefit again back to the town because we have the profit-sharing piece with, as far as recyclables. The other piece I was going to say was that we have also utilized the, some of the old recycling bins that have been redistributed back to Town Hall. There's one in every single office I've made sure of, in every single conference room in this Town Hall now. And we've also distributed some back to the schools that needed them for classrooms. I'm talking about the smaller little bins, yeah. We've also have worked, and I want to thank Tom Dion, Andy and John, and I was part of the committee for the condo committee, that have resolved the five grandfather condos to have them be treated equally. We revised the size of their dumpsters so that when this dumpster program goes into effect in January 1st, that their dumpsters will be equivalent to each household, like what we have in the single-family households in Abington, to getting a 64-gallon toter for trash and recycling. The future concerns I want to just mention are that we need to have mandatory recycling needs to continue. There is a state law that there is mandatory recycling in Massachusetts, which means that residents need to put out both their trash and recycling carts at the same time and try not to bring them back, one end before the other one gets emptied, because we need to show that people are recycling. Trash carts and recycling carts need to be out by 7:00 a.m. for the morning of the pickup. We did have a lot of phone calls at the beginning of this program and also last week due to our first floater holiday. I want to mention while I'm here tonight, the, I do have it here, okay, the six holidays that are not considered floaters that where there will be a one-day trash delay, New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day. In other words, holidays such as Patriots Day, Veterans Day, Martin Luther King Day would be considered a regular trash root holiday. Do not delay putting your trash out by one day when a holiday falls on that, those particular holidays fall that week.
Is that on your web, is that on the, the town's website?
This, this particular...
Schedule?
Schedule is on the town website.
But if I could, Sharon, could, perhaps could they elaborate? And I'll, I'll confess to you, I was one of the confused people. And I called around and thankfully I got ahold of Kenny that night. But the website, I understand what it's saying, but I don't think, if they could perhaps just elaborate a little bit more and indicate that on these holidays, trash will be picked up, on these holidays, they won't, if it falls on a Sunday, because I think if you look at it, you know, and again, I'll admit I'm not that bright, but I, I looked at it and determined that, well, it looks like it was, but I just thought perhaps it could be a little bit clearer.
I understand. Two things to that, we did put, I'm going to elaborate on your statement, but we did put it out in the paper, we did have it on the cable news channel, we had it on an answering machine, and we have been informing people when they call in. But in the next couple of weeks, there is going to be a quarterly mailing that the Waste Solutions is going to send me a rough draft of, and I will proof it, but it will have on it a calendar that will have in different color codes...
Excellent.
The holidays that are considered, the ones I just read off, the ones that aren't. It will also have the, which I was going to mention here tonight, the yard waste pickup is the week of November 12th, and Christmas tree pickup is January 12th and January 19th. And they're going to be curbside, both situations. The, the only, and I apologize that, that's the one thing I would definitely say that fell on the, a loophole of not thinking about it as much, was this tremendous change of holidays, in as far as, that's the one thing I can see that I wish, looking back now, when we presented the question and answer flyers, that we didn't have an insert for that. But we're learning, we're trying to make it more positive as we go forward. And the only other thing I was just going to mention was that we do have an ongoing working with the recycling in the school lunchrooms, and that the schools are doing, trying to implement a program where there would be like a waste station set up in each of the lunchrooms, where there would be a container for dumping out like the milk and juices, because you can recycle the cartons. They don't have to be rinsed out, but they do have to be emptied out. And then next to that would be a recycling container and then the trash container, because again, I'm trying to reduce waste. And we also are, should be hearing in the next couple of weeks from DEP regarding the grant that I wrote for not only getting the reimbursement for the toters, which would be $13 per toter for their, only the recycling toters. And then also the, I also wrote a grant for the schools as far as for recycling, and then also a smaller grant for, sort of based on like media information to put out to the residents. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
This, talk about the yard waste, this is the first time I think this town has really experienced something like that. It'll be on a Saturday or something, or will it be...
It's going to be during the week of their normal pickup.
During the weekend, how are the residents expected to, does it have to be in a bag? Could we put it in our barrels as long as there isn't trash in it? And have the, is it going to be, is it automatically picked up like the other one, or...
Yes. It's, well, it's, it's going to either be in, you know, the bags that you would buy at Lowe's?
Correct, yeah.
Or in your...
Or at Trukies.
Or, excuse me, I apologize.
Paper bags, right, recyclable bags.
Or you can put it in, if you've kept your old bin that you use for trash or recycling.
Okay. Could they put it in the, the totes?
No.
Okay.
No, no, yeah, it's a separate pickup.
So no plastic bags, either loose or in the paper bag?
Correct, yeah.
As many bags as you can fill?
Yeah, yeah, there is, I have not heard that there is a limit.
There is no limit.
What's that?
There is no limit.
Yeah, that's why I, yeah.
And that basically has to be grass covered, and you say yard waste, they can't be, or cannot be brushed and small.
Yeah, small, small, yeah.
It should be bundled so they can just pick it up?
Yeah.
And, you know, tie it so that it can be picked up and just put into the truck. It's a separate, it's not an automated pickup. This is a regular pickup.
Will that occur on the same day as your rubbish?
Yes. Is it that week, on the same day?
That week?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Very good.
Kenny? Are there any other resources besides paying the bulk fee? I mean, if someone has something they want to get rid of, would they be able to call the Board of Health and get a number for like recycling?
There is a list on, on my health department website for other places in town that, you know, that do metal pickup or other things, if you want to look on our, my website. Or no, it's not just my website, but it's the health department website, yeah. I also, Tom, did you have a question?
I think Kenny's got another one.
Okay.
This is something we brought up when I was on the Board of Health, and I...
This is something we brought up when I was on the Board of Health, and I think Dory was in charge then, and we almost got it done, but we didn't. We talked about a phone number dedicated to trash. So if we had questions, there'd basically be a recording there, and, you know, maybe a menu, or at least, okay, you could, you know, like for now, we could say, okay, don't forget yard waste, just everything that you just said, it's the week of November 12th, put it out with your regular trash. And then it could say, the next holiday is, you know, Veterans' Day, and trash will get picked up at the regular time. And then it goes into December, it could change it, Christmas, you know, something like that. And then at the end, it could say, if you have further questions, you can contact the hauler, or visit the website, blah, blah, blah. I think that would be great, and that, if we do it now, you could put that number, it could be, the number would stay the same, and you could put it into the mailing.
But you're talking about getting a second phone number, correct, for the health department?
It doesn't mean, doesn't necessarily have to be at the health department, because it could be a message. It doesn't have to be picked up. It could be a message, the trash hotline, call it, you know.
Well, we do right now, it's Waste Solutions that they're supposed to be calling for the information. I can certainly put on our phone message right now, the next upcoming holidays, and make sure that people know that it's a regular holiday pickup. I can also name off the holidays that won't be picked up on a regular trash day, delayed day. And then I can certainly, the only other thing I can do at least right now is, like the flyers are going to be coming out, and be sending, be sent to all the residents.
Couldn't it just be a number dedicated to the trash? And if you have a trash question, call this number, and all your, all your questions would be answered? I mean, is it possible to get a separate phone number with just a message on it?
Yeah, I guess, I guess you could. The problem is that it may not always be manned. I mean, you'd have to leave a number, and...
Well, no, no, it wouldn't be manned. Have your questions, okay. You have a question, you're thinking to yourself, is trash going to get picked up this next holiday? It will be on the recording, and if it is on the recording, at the end of the recording, it would say, if you need to talk to someone, or if, you know, if this doesn't provide your answer, go to, we have a trash pickup schedule on the web, town website, or the Board of Health website.
I think it all depends on getting a second phone line, correct?
And we'd have to publicize it. Yeah, I guess, you know, we could probably do it. And on that, you know, you can press one for a schedule, press two for this, press three for whatever, you know, holiday pickup schedule, yard waste.
Well, the biggest thing too is, is just like, when I was on the Board of Health, several times, the trash didn't get picked up because there was a snow emergency. You could change the message that morning and say, okay, trash will not be picked up today, you know, please do not put it out, that sort of stuff. At least people will know, who do I call at 6:00 in the morning to, should I put my trash out? At least we could change the message right then and there.
You know, the, where we run into trouble is when we do something outside of the norm. You know, if people, unless it's a blizzard, there should be no delay in trash because of a storm. And it should be picked up on the day in which it's supposed to be. And when we start making those exceptions and changes, then we run into trouble, like we did with...
Well, that's all well and good, but, you know, I have fellow selectmen calling me at home wanting to know if the trash is getting picked up, and I see people, boy, they really screwed up this week. I said, no, actually, if you didn't put your trash out, you screwed up. You know, but, I mean, it's just got to be, it's the same thing we talked about. If you don't read the newspaper, if you don't have a website, you know, you might not get this information. So maybe at least, where do I get this information? You call this number, you call this number. It could be on the magnet that's on your refrigerator. If we just keep putting out the same phone number in press releases, magnets in the mailings, yearly mailings that go out from Waste Solutions, at least the people will know, okay, this is who I call. It's just an idea.
Well, we did that with the, with the mailing. Each, most of the trash containers, although there were some that did not, received the bag of information, which included the magnet and what's recyclable. Like I said, we didn't include information that we probably should have. And knowing better, we'll do that the next time, but we've already sent that out.
If you call the Waste Solutions phone number, it's on the magnet, you're going, you call them 6:00 in the morning, you're not going to, they're not going to tell you, trash does get picked up today in Abington. I mean, it's going to be either a recording call back when they're open, or you're not going to get, it's for Waste Solutions, it's not for the town of Abington. That's, I'm done talking, just wondering.
It's something to look at.
We can do something about that.
Tom had a question.
Sharon, two questions. One is the hazardous waste collection.
Yes.
I think there's an upcoming event at, I think it's at the handle of Farrokh.
There's one left for this...
Abington residents can go down on 139, I think there's a transfer station there.
Yes. The only thing is, they all have to pay for it.
Right.
Which is around $43 per carload. And they assess how much you have in the car once they, when you get down there at the site, they can tell you based on amount of paint cans or whatever that you're carrying, if it, how much it considers it a carload or more than a carload. Yeah, but there is one event left this month.
And I know your board and John are trying to put more money into that budget, not for residents.
What happened was, the last two years, it was very, very few, it was very low activity in the last two hazardous waste days. And I put in what was recommended by the South Shore Recycling Cooperative, and then what happened was, there was a large newspaper article in the Boston Globe advertising this particular, our particular event, and we had a tremendous amount of activity, which is good. But I just will make sure next year we put more in our budget, so this doesn't happen.
Yeah. Then the second and last question is, I find myself being stopped at the football games by a couple of, let me say, environmentally conscious people, asking why Abington, some of our sports fields do not have like a recycling bin. And I guess the best recent example is traveling to Noah while they have recycling bins that are sort of modeled after a mailbox, where you pull down and you put your recycling in. Not sure if there's any activity going on in that area, but this is something that I know some residents are...
No, it's something I've been trying to work on of wanting to get toters out to all the parks and the playing fields. You were in the process of ordering some, correct? Was that...
We ordered some yellow lids for 96-gallon containers that, I don't know if the lids have come in yet from the manufacturer?
I haven't heard yet, yeah.
But they're, they're a cutout rim, metal rim, large enough to fit a bottle or can, you know, items like that, but not necessarily trash. And so, yes, we have discussed it with Kenan, and we've discussed it with the hauler to basically have those, the problem we're having is where we're going to locate them during pickup, because somebody has to either cart them if they're not, if the athletic field is not by a public way, or if they are, then obviously we're going to locate them so that we can unlock them, and the vendor can unlock them and pick them up through the automatic arm, the automated arm. So yes, we're working on that, and we should hopefully have that resolved no later than the spring.
The other thing with that, Tom, is Island Grove, because their concession stands sell a lot of water and water bottles and the cans of soda, and that would take in a lot of recycling that way, but there is getting the toters from the concession stand up to the end of the road. And we just have to figure out how we're going to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just wanted to add one other thing while I'm here, is the flu clinics. There's actually two flu clinics scheduled for next Monday. One is from 9:30 to 12:30 at the Abington Senior Center, and then there's also one from 1:30 to 3:30 in this room. And all residents, town employees, are welcome to attend. We did get less flu vaccine this year than what I had hoped. They based it on what we had for account for last year. And what happened last year, I don't know if you remember this, but the state was very late in distributing the flu vaccine to cities and towns. So by the time it was distributed, a lot of people had already gotten their flu shots. So we only had, I think, around 169 doses. So that's all they're giving us this year. I'm not sure yet if they're, you know, once I run out of those, if they'll allow me to purchase any, not purchase, but be given anymore. I'll have to find out, but I would just say that if you need a flu shot, please come, and we'll, you know, distribute as many as we can. Okay.
Mike had one more question, Sharon.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
There's probably more of a personal thing than anything. On picking up rubbish on Veterans' Day.
Yes.
It's a holiday that I've felt and still feel, and will continue to feel, that doesn't give the proper recognition. I understand that that's a day you're going to pick up rubbish. I understand that they also have had services. I would certainly hope that some consideration would be given, that that parade route that goes down Washington Street and something like that would not have the rubbish standing at attention while that parade went by. I think that would be, in my opinion, very disrespectful to that day. So if there was some way we could arrange it so, you know, either that route wasn't picked up, or those houses wasn't picked, you know what I'm saying? I just, and that's my personal...
The parade is on, is the parade, the parade is on...
Washington Street.
Sunday. On Sunday, there's no picking up.
Yeah, there would be, yeah, there wouldn't be.
But in the future, going forward, it may be, it could be going forward, so. I guess we would be all set if it was on a Sunday.
Yes, you would be, at least this year.
This year.
Yeah.
We won't pick up at the churches, though.
Yeah.
No, all right, that's fine.
Thank you very much, Sharon.
You're welcome.
Very good.
Thank you, Sharon.
Action discussion items. Number one, approval of minutes of the September 24th, 2012 open session.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number two, approval of Booster's annual door-to-door drive, October 28th, 2012. We have a request from the Abington Green Wave Boosters, respectfully request permission to conduct our annual door-to-door drive on Sunday, October 28th, 2012, from noon to approximately 3:00 p.m.
Make a motion to approve, provided they notify the police and whatever safety personnel, I assume they do. That's a yearly event.
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Item number three, approval of St. Patrick's Day Parade, March 17th, 2012, is a request for the Abington St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee for permission to hold its 34th annual St. Patrick's Day Parade on Sunday, March 17th, 2013, at 1:00 p.m. The route from Washington Street to Adams Street, to Route 58, to Route 139, onto North Ave, and ending at Railroad Street.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Item number four, adoption of policy for web advertising.
Mr. Chime, is this the first reading of this?
It is.
Wonder if we want to...
Yeah, we should probably take, I think the policy is that we take any discussion on it, and then we put it on the agenda for approval at the next meeting, so. I don't know if anybody has any questions, or...
Is this model after another town's?
Yes. Actually, it's been approved by town council.
That was one of my other questions.
How many ads do we think we're going to, are you planning on just doing one ad, or how many can you accommodate? Is there a limit?
I think, I don't know how many we can accommodate, but we'll accommodate as many as we can.
I know, I know they can do a rotating one, so for a certain amount of time, it's, you know, A, and then, and then it's, you know, company B.
You want to be a gold sponsor, it'll be on for a minute.
And it would, any plans, is like a banner out on the bottom, or just a block? Does it matter, do you know, have plans for that, or?
Yeah, if we mirror the town of Plymouth, it's the, they have it in the above left-hand corner. And as soon as you click on the homepage, you see, you know, if you have a law office, for instance, offering, they're up there. And then it can rotate, and then another company will, you know, advertise that for a certain amount of time, on a rotating schedule.
Now, would this be a policy for all town websites, or are we just talking about just the town? I mean, because each board has their own website, the Board of Health has a website, the police, fire have separate ones. Would we adopt this policy?
Usually the executive branch would, would set a policy for the town. That's your, that's what you're charged with doing, so yes, it would.
And you're running a special already? Is that what this is?
Yeah, that was copied after the town of Plymouth as well, because they got an offer for the special price, so they said, we'll take it, and that's our special.
My last question, is it going to be like a Wacky Wednesday promotion, too, or? Just kidding.
Every, every Wednesday for 12, for 12 months, you know, for Wednesdays, Wednesdays a month.
Is Plymouth, so you've modeled this after the town of Plymouth?
It's exactly the town of Plymouth, except for the red line changes.
Do you know how successful they are as far as doing their advertising?
They, yep, they have one currently. It took a while, and they got it at the special rate, so they do have one.
They do.
Law firm that they're advertising currently. But it's very new, too. They just started it.
Yeah. Okay. Tom?
Is there a limit to the number of ads you will take to put on the site?
I don't...
Because I could foresee a problem where, I don't know, car dealer, you know, might be oversubscribed, you may start off with two, and then eight others come in and want a list, and, you know, if I was one of the first two thinking I'm getting preferred space, or, you know, more time up there, that I could see that being an issue.
Mm-hmm. Maybe we put that in the policy to limit the number?
Well, I think it's more of a question. I don't know. It's like if you bought a franchise.
Right.
It'd be a bad example, and then somebody opens up beside you, you know, selling the same product or whatever.
Competition.
And the other question I had was, who is kind of the overseer of some of these things that we don't want, whether it's alcohol, tobacco, I don't know.
Drugs.
I don't want to say porn, but I did say it, and, you know, as far as who, who's going to be the judge of what goes up and goes down? I'm not sure if I saw that in here, not that we need to, but it just, it just seems to me, if we're going to protect the integrity of Abington, that, you know, somebody should, whether it's the Board of Selectmen, whether it's the town manager, whether it's somebody else.
If you look at page three, Tom, it does say, to protect the integrity of the town and to ensure a proper measure of uniformity.
shall require specific authorization by the Board of Selectmen or its designee.
Or its designee for approval.
For instance, it would be, you know, a business in Abington, like Plymouth actually, has Brennan Smoke Shop, and they would advertise them, but they wouldn't advertise for Marlboro, for example. It would be a local business.
Yeah. So for example, a tattoo parlor, let's say.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And I think it's up to the discretion.
I'm not picking out tattoo parlors, but I mean, just, you know, things of that nature.
Right, no, good point.
It's not illegal.
It's, yeah.
Depends on what picture they use.
Thank you.
Any other comments, or, no? So we'll put it on for next meeting to adopt it?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, item number five, adoption of selectmen's policy regarding special municipal employee And that has been before us, I think, a couple of times now. Based on the input from last time, I think I've included everything that was brought up, but if not, please let me know, or if you have any other concerns or questions on it.
I need to have some questions. The policy states that any person holding an elected or appointed officer or servant as a member of the board shall file a written request with the Board of Selectmen, asking for that designation.
A special municipal employee status designation, yes.
Okay. And number five, the request for special municipal will be voted upon individually And number five, the request for special municipal will be voted upon individually for each position, commission, or board. So that means if an individual of a particular board, say it's a five-member board, were to request it, we would have to, as I understand the way the law is written, we, we can't exclude anybody from that board, we have to vote the whole board in. So if one person from a five-member board asks for that designation, we could either vote the whole board in or the whole board out.
That's my understanding. Correct, John?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
You have to vote the design, yeah, Kevin, yeah. You have to vote the designation for the entire committee, you can't vote it for just one particular individual on the committee.
If it's a committee that you're voting the designation for, if it's an individual, then obviously.
And has this been distributed to pertinent people, I mean, the boards and commissions are aware of this policy? Uh, uh, the board, the, the current boards and elected officials are aware that this board is about to vote this, I mean, have they been presented this?
Well, everybody on the list has been notified about the conflict of interest that we had sent out, all those letters.
Yep, yep, no, I just wanted...
But they haven't received a copy of this policy?
They, no, they, they haven't, but you know what? I mean, we sent out a hundred and fifty-one requests, and we received less than fifty back, or about fifty. So, um, I, we could, we could obviously send it out to them, but, um, it's really a board, you know, decision. I don't know if there's something in here that would be, um, offensive to any particular board or committee, because it is the statute. It is, it's a reflection of the statute.
And then just my last question would be, on the list that's here, there's some committees that I think are no longer relevant, are no longer in existence, so therefore, they would automatically be excluded because they didn't, I mean, we don't have to eliminate these now. They were voted...
No, they will be eliminated by your action, whether you take...
Will they go through the list?
They had been voted at a previous selectman's meeting, so, okay.
Tom?
Okay, just to pick up on Mike's point, I bet it seems to me you need to talk about the policy, and then we're gonna vote on, I believe, the, the committees that are before us, and what, um, I guess I'm somewhat, well, I guess the question is, if somebody from one of these committees, or this committee, nobody submitted a letter to the selectman asking for it, based on this policy where it says you have the request right to us, does that mean that those, that committee automatically gets eliminated? Or can we just say, even if they didn't apply, we're gonna give them special municipal employee status anyway? I guess it's the question I have.
Well, if we adopt a policy, it's, I would think you'd adhere to it, but you, you know, that's up to the vote of the board, I would think.
The board grants, you, in most municipalities, the Board of Selectmen grants that authority, not on a wholesale basis, but on a case-by-case basis. Some do it for everybody, but they do it on a regular, consistent basis. The last time, the, the list that you have in front of you, I think the last time that that list was ever updated was in two thousand and seven?
Two thousand and five.
Two thousand and five.
But we're not the worst, because I, I requested some surrounding towns, as far as...
Oh, yeah, and some of them are...
East Bridgewater was nineteen eighty-eight, Hanson hasn't done it since nineteen sixty-five. And there are towns, like you said, John, Pembroke does it on an annual basis. Every year, they review what positions are granted special municipal employee status.
And that's a duty and responsibility of the selectmen there, you know, they do it.
Pembroke did it in two thousand and eleven. So I thi, I think the, the rationale behind the policy is so we do it on a consistent basis, instead of leaving it out there. Night, I, I looked at Abington, nineteen eighty-eight, there were no special municipal employees. That was according to a letter from Mrs. McKenna to the State Ethics Commission, so we had no special municipal employees in nineteen eighty-eight. In nineteen ninety-seven was the first time we added a special municipal employee, that was the fence viewer. In two thousand and five, July of two thousand and five, we added the Finance Committee Secretary, the Animal Control Officer, and the Plan, Planning Board Secretary. And then in September twenty-seventh of oh-five, that list that's there now was all of a sudden adopted. So, I'm not sure why that was all of a sudden. We went from four positions to, you know, twenty-five or thirty, but it hasn't been reviewed since two thousand and five, so I think it's time to review it and adopt a policy, but...
And I think the, um, I, I think the, uh, doing it at a public meeting gives everybody an understanding of whether or not the board feels that they should be exempt or not. That's a board decision, so, um... Like, the Police Station Building Advisory Committee is selectmen, uh, I mean, is indicated, no longer in existence.
No, those, a lot of these boards aren't in existence any longer, so...
I don't know about the Land Reuse Board of Directors, or the Land Reuse Advisory Board, I don't know. I think that they're pretty much, um, nonexistent. The Growth Management Committee, I, I don't think, um, Housing Partnership, um... There's a lot of committees that I would say are stale. Surplus Land Committee.
Yep, but those, we'll deal with those after. Let's, do you guys have any more input on the policy itself, or?
I, I just, again, I have an issue that, when we go down the list here of about forty, fifty committees, are, are we gonna go one by one and ask whether somebody in that board has submitted a letter?
Hope so.
I would think so, based upon the policy.
I'm just concerned that we're potentially putting people that may not know, may not have got the letter, may not have returned it in harm's way.
Harm's way.
Well, I mean, ethically, right?
Everyone got the letter.
You're on a board, and you assume, you know, you're not aware of this, right? Any person you represent, right, before another town board, potentially, that's an ethics violation. And I'm just concerned whether we've done our due diligence in making sure that every single person, because there's gotta be two hundred or so people here, that frankly, could be put in harm's way, and to me, it, it may kill volunteerism, you know, if that comes to fruition. And I just, you know, I have an issue with that, so...
And how, how do you suggest we, you wanna split the phone list in five and make some phone calls? We sent out a mailing to everybody.
Well, I guess you could do it this way. I guess you could adopt, if you wanted to, you could adopt the policy, if, if to allay Tom's concerns, let people again know that this policy is now in place, and if they want to maintain their special municipal employee status, they have to respond in writing that they...
Otherwise, it'll be revoked.
They, they, let us know in, in writing, like the policy says, that they need to...
We have some people that responded already, right, and we, we...
We do.
About fifty.
Kevin, you had something?
Yeah, maybe the, my thought, at least my thought is, if we just take it, if there are questions now, and we have a warrant article on for the Fall Special Town Meeting to deal with the whole ethics bylaw, would it not be prudent to take this under advisement, wait to see what Action Town Meeting takes? And I realize the two may not be exactly the same, but at least we'd have a direction from there, and then that way, the questions may or may not get cleared up in the interim.
I, that's, but I, my feeling is you still need, even if you have that, if that ethics bylaw is, is adopted, I think you still need a policy for us to follow as far as granting the status.
I, I understand, but I guess the question is if there's, if there's questions of ambiguity from some of the board members, I'm just, in the interest of...
Well, again, what about my suggestion that we, if you want to adopt the policy, if the policy is adopted, then we send out a letter to everyone. We don't take action on the list as far as revoking or granting the status, and let people know that the selectmen have now adopted a policy, and if you want to maintain your status, then you need to let us know in writing.
I don't mind that, I don't, I'm just trying to...
Yeah, I know, yeah.
acquiesce to if there's common ground, that's all.
What is the, why are we doing this? What is, what is the driving force behind this, is more or less to keep people safe, out of harm's way, of a, of a law that... I mean, I've seen it, different interpretations from lawyers and stuff like that, it can go here, there, and everywhere, it's ever far-reaching. It just, uh, it's almost like, well, you made a law, you can go here, there, and everywhere, so this is what we have to do to respond to it. And, um, you know, it, I don't know, it isn't something I don't, I don't think that this board, or, or I certainly wouldn't, trying to do something to make it hotter on anybody, but in effect, it is. You can very, you read this, and, and I, I mean, I've talked to the town manager about this, this, this ethics thing can just go, you know, your involvement here, your involvement there, unknowingly. I mean, this, this to me would have been okay if you're generally receiving compensation for taking, you know, a position and going representing them, but it isn't. You don't even receive compensation, you can just go speak on behalf of somebody, and you more or less violate the ethics law, unless you have
Special municipal employee.
special municipal employee, which, you know, I, I mean...
What the, what the law is trying to do is trying, is trying to take these divided loyalties and put them under the, the town of, of Abington. In other words, if, if you, if you're, um, an individual that represents clients before boards and committees, then you have a divided loyalty. You have a loyalty to the town, you take an oath, and, and you, um, have that, that loyalty, and, and State Ethics wants to make sure that there is one loyalty, and that is to the town of Abington, and not to any other, any other entity unless you get a special municipal exemption status. And then you can have that divided loyalty, but you can't have it unless the Board of Selectmen grants it.
Right, it's an accept, my feeling is, the, the rule is that you either represent people in front of boards and committees, or you serve on a board and committee, you don't mix the two. That's the rule, and then you can get an exception to that. I think in Abington, and some of these other towns, actually...
It's a reverse.
Yeah, the exception has become the rule, in that everybody gets special municipal employee status, so it really has no meaning, because, you know, the whole ethics law at some point has no meaning, because everybody has special municipal employee status, and they can do whatever they want.
I know where you're going with it. I also saw, when, when it first came down on this, and, and the interpretation of it, a person that was serving on a volunteer committee that went and talked, um, about a rubbish contract on behalf of her condo association, and basically violated the, the, the thing, because she was on a, a committee. And that, that to me was, geez, how, how, that, that is just so far-fetched.
Right, it is far-fetched, and, and some of those committees, in my opinion, they probably should be granted special municipal employee status, cause, but there's others, in my opinion, that shouldn't. The Board of Selectmen doesn't get special municipal employee status. We, none of us can go sit in front of another board or committee, that's by statute, we can't do it.
No, I know that, and I agree with that, that's fine.
But in my opinion, there's other positions in this town, in other committees, that shouldn't be doing that either. And I'm sure there'll be disagreement as to whether or not that's the case, but that's just how I feel about it. Go ahead, Tom.
Okay, just to dovetail on a couple of comments. As far as communication, for me, we just saw with probably the service that's most used in town, day in, day out, is trash, and we've just heard, I think, every member of this board has got comments this past week on Columbus Day, that somehow, for as, as hard as we try to communicate, that Monday, you're gonna pick up the trash. People didn't know. In fact, you probably had to spend some money to have them come back the second day to do it. Now, this, to me, by sending out the letter, I can tell you personally, I got calls from two people, two public officials, that didn't know what the hell it was about, and they threw it in the dead letter file. And, and for me, I just, I just think that to adopt a policy where you have to write, and if you don't, then, you know, that person is sitting on maybe, I would say, a lesser committee, and, you know, the example that's used is they're a member of the Lions, and now they go to the health board to get some sort of a permit for food or whatever, they don't have special municipal employee status. They're in violation of the law, that somebody can basically report them to the Ethics. Extreme example, I know it's an extreme example, but frankly, by the law, they violated the, the, um, the status, and to me, I don't, to Mike's point, I don't see what problem we're trying to solve here. Can you give me examples where people have misused this? And this last point is, I think it's a tremendous insult to the people that sit on boards, and the people that are employees that, um, where people come in to request things, whether it's the planning, the zoning, or whatever, to think that because you're of some ilk, or you're on some board, or you have some status, that the board's gonna roll over and, and give you what you want. And to me, that's sort of what this is feeling like to me, and, again, I like the policy, except you have to put in writing that, you know, you want it. I just think that...
How else would you know, how else would you know if they wanted it or not? How else would you know?
Well, I, I, again, for me, Andy, I, to take the other angle, I don't see any reason why the next motion would be, if we wanted to, is to approve all of these committees, because I don't see what...
And again, that's fine, if, if, I, I disagree...
I don't see that I can do it with the way you've got this written, because we'd have to go three, two, one, and see if they've, somebody from this committee has written the letter.
But we should, and again, this is my opinion, we should be doing that. That's, that's our job as selectmen, to review this on an annual basis, and not let it sit out there for five years, and who knows, you know, what's go, I'm not saying anybody's out there doing anything improper, but I think what this is trying to do is prevent that from happening in the future.
The question I'd have outside of the board would be, what do you think if this was put to town meeting, like the Ethics? Is this going up or down?
I have no idea.
Well, I think we, we need to think of that, because, because we represent...
Tom, we get elected to make decisions, right? We get elected to adopt policies. This is a policy that we would put in place so we can do our job, which is to grant special municipal employee status to certain positions. That, you know, town meeting doesn't have any authority over what we're doing.
Yeah, but we also represent sixteen thousand people.
Right.
And if sixteen thousand people, eighty percent of them, wouldn't want us to adopt this policy, I cherry-pick committees. I think we're doing a disservice to the people that are like us.
But I think you have to cherry-pick.
How do you know that?
I think you have to cherry-pick each, because that's what you're obligated to do. You have to grant this, you have to grant this status, right? If, if you don't grant the status, then nobody has it. Right now, everybody has it, and, again, in my opinion, I don't think that's good for town government, so...
I don't, I respect that, I mean, I understand, I just, not sure I agree with it.
I, I think we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place.
I think, I think adopting this policy, it, it promotes confidence in, in the boards. People know that, okay, they're not got, their loyalty is to the town, which, which it should be. That's, that's why I ran for office, to be loyal to the town and get back to the town.
The town, Tom, just to your point, the town of Avon, which is a lot smaller than town of Abington, has zero positions as special municipal employees. The town of Waymouth has two positions. They're a city. Back in nineteen sixty-five, their selectmen at the time voted that no special classifications would be given under the Conflict of Interest Law to anybody serving on a town board or town, and that continues to this day. Halifax has eight positions, that's it, that have special municipal employee status. As I said, there's other towns, Whitman, Rockland, they have multiple committees that are, but we're not doing anything that a lot of other towns haven't done.
No, and I, and I understand that, but again, you, you named three or four of this three hundred and fifty-one communities, and if I was arguing the other way, I'd go to look at communities and just say...
And I, and I did, and I just said, right.
Here's all the committees, here's all the volunteers, we're gonna vote them all, because we don't know enough to say that, you know, people on these committees are gonna...
So we're too lazy to do our jobs?
I'm not sure if we're too lazy, but I'm, 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 I think that, how are you gonna tell me the bylaw review if they didn't, um, apply?
And that was my, I, I get your point, I get your point there, and that's fine. I, I have no problem. If you want to send this policy out to people, let them know, we've adopted this policy. If they want to continue as special municipal employee status, they need to send it back to us in writing, and come before us, and tell us why they need that status. I have no problem in doing that, if that's what you want to do.
I would bet you that ninety percent of these people don't know they have the status.
They didn't have it up until seven years ago. None of, nobody had it, except for those four positions in the town. I didn't have it when I was a, the town moderator. You didn't have it when you were town moderator. You didn't have it when you were town moderator.
I didn't deserve it.
I'll agree with that. But you are special, though.
I think we gotta move along.
It states in here that special municipal employee status should be granted only in very limited circumstances. Now, is that a statement from the State Ethics Commission? Or is that just something that...
Where is that, Kevin?
The second paragraph.
That would be the...
That was, that was, yeah, that's our policy.
Loyal. I don't, I don't think you, I think my problem is with the law in general, with the, the government, again, putting its, and coming into a small town, saying, this is what you have to do. I don't think that every board and commission in town would really need the status.
Of course, and why give them?
Then we, then they might not apply for it, that's what I'm saying. I guess I'm looking at this and saying, yes, we probably, you know, need some kind of policy, we should have a policy, so I'll go along with that, and then the fact that we can notify the people. I guess if it doesn't work, we could make changes to it.
Exactly.
I guess, but then the...
I'll make a motion to adopt this policy as written, but exclude the, uh, making classifications as to who will be a special municipal employee until, you know, until we do our due, due diligence, however we decide to do it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's, it's a two-pronged...
Yeah, that's fine.
And currently, whoever's, whoever's a special municipal employee now will be one until we...
Exactly, until we...
That's fair.
Yeah. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
No.
Okay. So now, do you want to send out a letter to all the, once again? I think that's fair, I think that's a fair thing to do.
I think we send a policy out that's been adopted, we indicate to, to them when the meeting is going to be, we want them to reply to us.
In writing?
In writing, that, you know, they're requesting this special municipal exemption status.
If they think it's required.
Right, if they say, right, yeah.
You know, I, I hope you should state that, if you think you need this status.
Well, what I'll do is I'll put, I'll put, we'll put something together this week, and I'll get it out to everybody, and you can comment on it, and I'll make the changes.
And I know town council put a lot of work into that letter, but it was confusing. Maybe it can be a little bit more English, yes, a little bit more, you know.
What we'll do is we'll develop the letter at layman's term, and then give it to him.
That will be better.
If you do like a one paragraph explaining what it's all about first, I think this is important, that, that line that I just read, special municipal employee status should be granted only in very limited circumstances, I think that's important to note in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and, and one other thing, I, you know, one of the things that, um, you know, the, I know that there was a comparison made between letting forty-three hundred households know about trash and, and letting public officials who are elected or appointed to take an oath of office that, you know, they're gonna uphold bylaws of the town, it's a little different, I think, and, you know, unfortunately, we didn't get a good response the first time, and for any public official who took that, that letter, that was really an official letter of the town, and chucked it, or put it aside, or paid no attention to it, I think is wrong, because, you know, it's, it was signed by the town manager, it, it represents the Board of Selectmen's thoughts and desires, and, you know, they kind of just...
Well, they'll get another chance here, and that's fine. Okay.
I chuck mine, but I put it in the recycle bin.
Somebody use it for kindling wood.
And I put that along with my tax bill, I put it in there.
Okay, so we're gonna delay item number six. Item number seven, adoption of town government committee handbook.
I move we approve. I think it's very neatly done, and I want to congratulate all the authors.
Can I just make one real brief remark, and I'm not gonna fall on my sword for this? I, I do think the part, and again, here we go, about special municipal employee status, I would prefer to see that as an addendum to, you know, the end.
Yeah, we can...
Those are the thing, move it to the back.
Put it as an exhibit?
As an exhibit, but that's my opinion, it's up to the board, obviously.
I have no problem with that.
I'd second Kevin's. I second Kevin's.
Even though we just voted the policy?
No, I think we're talking-
No, he's not going to take that out, he just wants to put it on the end as an exhibit, as opposed to in the body of the-
In the body, it's still going to be here.
Still be there, it just would be in a different place.
We reference-
I'll accept that amendment.
We reference the remote participation. Have we adopted that?
We did.
Yes. We, we have to adopt it as part of the planning board or the zoning board, where they have mandatory participation, and we've adopted that by statute.
Should that be included in here? There's only, there's some asterisks, it doesn't really refer to it, though.
No, we changed it.
Oh, I changed this, oh.
It should be, right? Does this one include that?
I didn't get that memo.
No, but the bottom of page eight says-
Remote participation note to be added.
Note to be added.
Yeah, we changed, I thought, maybe I didn't send.
No.
Did I not send that to you? I did add it on there.
It wasn't on the latest version, but-
Is it? This is?
Yeah, this is the latest version.
All right. I'll send it out to you, but it is, it is on there.
I believe you, because your loyalty is to the town.
I did add it on there.
It's right here, it's on page, you're saying, page eight.
Your second.
A second with that.
And this will be given to every elected, appointed official every year.
They're sworn in, the minute they're re-sworn, we'll send it out, we'll mail it to everybody. We'll put it on the website.
Yeah, it should, that should be.
It should be. It's for informational guide.
It's an informational guide, that's all. All right, we have a motion.
Yeah, but we'll put it on the website.
I'll second that motion if it had-
We have a motion and a second already.
Okay, then I'll throw it.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it.
We can also do it as a, when somebody applies for a board or committee, it can automatically be sent to them as an applicant.
Yep. Okay. Number eight, discussion on town-owned land. John?
Oh, okay. We have put together, and I think sometimes when you look at, at these things, and you look at them as a list, you don't really understand what continuity we have in town-owned land. The town-owned land that we have right here for the town, I'm going to just talk about some of the significant areas with which the town owns.
Want to move that?
Sorry, Kevin. What you have in green is land that is currently in existence, that is owned by the town, whether outright or by land-taking, and these areas that are shaded in are areas that complete the entire taking. For example, if you look at, I don't know what this is, it's here, but you see a tremendous amount of land that we own out, out here, which I think is in part-
That's watered up. Isn't that, where, is this Whitman?
It's Whitman, yeah.
That's watered up.
Right. And here's where we are here in the town. This is the town owned where, where the high school is, the athletic fields, the library, town hall. There's land here, this zone, that goes all the way out to Rockland.
Street.
Street. And, and this is-
Fire stations here. Fire stations there.
We have land here, here, I don't know what this is, I don't know how we could ever get out there, nothing. But we, there's a subdivision here that was planned as a subdivision, but was never built because of its way.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And so, that's town owned. Griffin's Dairy, obviously, as you know, that's right here. That's all, and the rest of it is in-
Rockland.
And we own some, obviously, another subdivision that wasn't built here, that is now town-owned with this, with this land here, and there's some land here. So, I guess the question for, for the board to consider is, what if any of this do you want? Because the issue came up in the context of, how can we raise money for capital? And there's, there's two schools of thought here. One is that you take that land that today you don't think is worth anything, and you want to sell it, and 25, 30 years from now, maybe somebody's water supply in another community that now has their water supply in your community. And the same thing, and the same thing happens in every community, where you get rid of land, and you sell it, you sell it for what the government rate is on an appraisal or on a bid, and it becomes a valuable piece of land 20, 30 years from now that we can't conceptualize. So I have concern about selling town assets to begin with, but, you know, obviously, if it's the board's desire to do so, we can look at that, but also, it controls our population growth to some degree. And land that is valuable is land that's really accessible through a public way. And as you can see, there are certain lands here that are accessible through a public way, but some may be wet, some may not be wet, some may be sellable and some may not be. But this is what we have as a picture of what is available, you know, to the town that is owned by the town, and a lot of it is adjacent to or contiguous to street access.
Do we have a surplus land committee still? We had one at one point.
We did, I don't know if we do. Yeah, not that I'm aware of. I think if we're going to have a surplus land committee, I think that the board needs to develop a policy for the dispersment of publicly-held land, and that it would require not only the board of the selectmen consent, staff consent, as well as town meetings consent. So-
Have you seen such policies?
I have.
Have you seen them, Kevin? Have you seen?
Yeah, I think maybe, and to John's point, maybe, you know, through him, he can establish with his financial team, one, have the assessor and the treasurer look at what has actually been taken to tax title, and have the assessor look at it, you know, in compliance with, where is it, based on zoning? So I think it's really more of a staff issue that, rather than have people come in and look at it, I think, I'll venture to say, a, a good portion of that you can't touch.
No.
But, you know, some of it maybe have taken by tax title and may be in a position to be auctioned off, I have no idea, but nobody's going to know that but the staff, so I think that's an issue.
And we can put together a listing of tax title. Of course, you know, there's, that's a very fluid process, because some of it, you know, may be in the process of tax title, whereas they have up until, you know, the date of the auction, for example, to reclaim, to reclaim it. So, you know, we may not ever realize, you know, any, any revenue from those types of parcels that are reclaimed. There are other parcels that the town staff want to see assembled, you know, for public purposes. You see, there's, if you have a public purpose now or in the future, you want to hold that land. If you, if you don't, obviously, and it's in tax title, you want to then auction it off. Since I've been here, we sold one parcel that way. It was a, it was a house that was built on a lot, that sold, and it paid for the back taxes and that stuff. So, we do have the mechanism in place to do that. We do it through the collector treasurer or the treasurer collector's office. He holds the tax title, and it goes up to bid, and people bid on it, and they have a retainer that they have to guarantee. But as Kevin has indicated, some of this land is just not built.
Yeah, you, one, can you get some more detail on, on it?
I wish we, you know, we could, once we get our layers of information for, you know, for GIS, we will certainly be in a better position to say, this is all wet, it's not buildable, it's no good to anybody. And others are. You know, we, we do have an interest here with trying to assemble a couple of different parcels of land, you know, for town, for public purpose, but it looks a lot different here than it does on a list on a page.
Yeah, absolutely. That's good, the visual is good.
Yeah, what it looks like.
Okay.
Is you, is that what you wanted? We can put that list together for you of tax title property-
Yeah.
And get it to you. I think some of that, I, from the collector's perspective, he would want to hold in confidentiality only because they have up to the day of the auction, literally, to reclaim the land, so. And I know once the board gets it, it turns in a confidentiality.
Aye.
It's not because you're out here telling everybody, but because it's a public document.
Any questions? Anybody have any questions? Okay, thanks, John.
Okay.
Item number nine, review and vote of special town meeting warrant, October 29th, 2012.
Okay. This is, the version six is the latest version that we have. And it's the version that went to residents, it was mailed out today.
Okay. So why don't we go, you want to go through it and-
Sure.
Make a recommendation on each one?
I don't think we have to read every one, though.
No, no. You can read it. Article one.
Article one is broken into three parts. One is to put money into stabilization, the other is to transfer free cash to capital.
Yep.
And the last is to put some money into post-employment benefits. Now, we initially talked about 10%, and we backed it out to 5% because we had some other capital needs that, that we wanted to make sure we were able to fund. And as you can see, we're taking $30,000 from healthcare to actually, as well as $2,270 from available funds, you know, to do that, and I'll talk about where that money's coming from.
May I move we recommend approval?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. And article two.
Article two deals with a transfer of, from available funds, which is within the budget. When you're transferring from available funds, it's the sum of money from within the operating budget of $105,565 for property casualty liability and workers' compensation. This is the amount that we were, we underfunded that line item.
Right.
And as I indicated before, we didn't have a true number until after the budget was set.
So what's the total number, John?
Excuse me?
For property, what, what will be the total number once we move this in?
Well, the property, the, the total for property is $151,000. That compares to $220,000 that we were paying with Maya. And then what really hurt us was the workers' comp. Put, we put, that put us in a workers' comp pool, so the difference, you know, is really, the majority of it is workers' comp.
Yep. It also includes our fire and police as well, the urgent appropriation.
You have a motion?
Motion to approve.
For a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. Article three.
Article three deals with, because the town clerk is, is an elected position, we decided to, with, I think, the finance committee's consent, had decided to increase their salary by $3,412, which is an M5 classification. It requires a two-thirds vote at town meeting because the, the tax rate has not been set yet, and any elected official that requires, that gets a raise prior to the tax rate being set requires a two-thirds vote.
I'll make a motion to approve.
For a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
What's, what's the percentage increase on that?
I don't, I can look at the percentage.
I figured it at 5.6, isn't it?
A little over 5%, but it represents what the average pay for town clerks in the area currently is, so.
If my memory serves me correct, Kenny, there's been a number of years with that. It's just, you know, the last couple of-
You know the last time the position received a raise?
Not in my lifetime, no. I've been here since, I don't, I think it was, oh, I can't, I can't tell you.
I think four or five years, I would say.
And see, that's the problem we face, because-
Yeah.
You know, there's-
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. Article four, which is the capital plan.
The, the finance committee decided to fund the second cruiser, which brings the total to five, the number of cruisers that the police department will have received between FY12 and FY13.
So what does that amount?
67,020.
Oh, that's for two cruisers?
Yeah, we, the town manager recommended one.
Yep.
And they, the finance committee took $30,000 on a article, a three, article three, because there was a 3A article-
Right.
For the town clerk, and used that money to fund the second cruiser.
You have a motion?
Well, are they going to, I saw some emails going back and forth here. Are they going to revisit the issue? Do we know, or?
I just took that whole race thing off, off the agenda, so there's, if they revisit it, it would be to reduce from two to one, the cruisers, and at this point, it doesn't make sense, because there's nowhere to put the money unless you just leave it floating.
Aaron?
Tom?
Well, I'll make the motion, but I don't want to discuss-
No, did you have a question? Go ahead.
Well, I just, I want to make sure I'm clear. The department request, the chief's request was for three at $104,250. Is that correct?
Excuse me? I'm sorry.
Did the chief initially ask for three cruisers?
He's on a 2-2-3 rotation. He receives three cruisers.
I'm just looking at what's in the warrant, John.
On the sheet here, it shows total requested, $104,250.
Yes. And, and the 67 represents how many?
Two.
Okay. And you and the finance committee are in?
We're in agreement with it, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Oh, sorry, Ken.
Do the money that you would ask for, for streets get put in, or that's not-
Well, I mean, I guess I-
I don't, you mentioned it, that's, I just, I don't see it.
No, it did not.
Okay.
And, um, I guess everyone's left the right to lobby for that on town meeting floor. I just-
Okay.
I think we need to start at some point.
Mm-hmm. All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, the ayes have it. Article five. Article five, John?
I'm sorry, um, article five deals with eighteen hundred dollars for the, uh, codification, the codification of the charter and the bylaws, um, this will bring all of our printed books up to date, as well as the, um, updates for the electronic, uh, versions, which are on the website, of all of our bylaws, and, and you know, last year, we, uh, increased, um, we made a lot of changes, we added new sections to the bylaws, we created, um, a new floodplain zone.
I'll make the motion to, to approve.
And she needs, she has twenty-one hundred, but she needs eighteen hundred additional to pay for that.
We have a motion, motion and a second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, the ayes have it. Article six. That's just the change in language.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Article seven, accept the provisions of general laws, chapter forty-four, fifty-three and a half.
That was the ambulance...
That's to establish...
We didn't get acted on, so I'll move we approve that.
No, second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Article eight. Suwa Enterprise Fund.
This is the collective bargaining...
Collective bargaining for the...
I'll move we approve it.
No, second.
For the two years prior. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, the ayes have it. Article nine.
Article nine, um, I just want to make a comment on, I sent out, I don't know if anyone received my, um, email that went out regarding what we talked about in executive session last week, uh, but I'm sure it reflected everything that we had talked about, I don't want to get into any details in public, but I have not heard back from the union, so I, uh, at this point, um, am not thinking that the union was all, all that enamored with what we had to, had to say back, um, and I, I don't, I don't know if this is something that...
So should we defer it until...
Yeah, we delay it, we can, we can make a recommendation on town, uh...
Yeah, yeah, defer it.
Defer it till, uh, we'll meet that night.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll want to defer it, okay.
Article ten.
Article ten is, um, ambulance receipts, um, establishing the enterprise account?
No, that's just for the firefighters.
I'm sorry, this is the fire, um...
Firefighters' contract.
Contract, and, and money is coming from ambulance receipts, general revenue, I mean, general, um, expenditures within the budget, which is revenue.
Yep.
And it's a hundred and fifty-six, four, sixty-eight, fifty-nine.
We have a motion?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, um, the hundred and fifty-six thousand is over three years, actually, is that right?
No, this is, this is, there's a retroactive piece, and it's a current piece.
Yeah, FY twenty-twelve.
This takes care of the twenty-twelve piece, and it takes care of the FY thirteen piece.
Any other questions, comments? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, Kevin abstains.
Duly noted.
Article eleven.
This is the article that we're spending sixteen thousand two forty-five to improve energy conservation measures in town buildings.
Yep.
Um, there's a hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents worth of work that's being performed, and we expect to save approximately forty thousand dollars a year in energy saving costs.
It's a good deal.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, the ayes have it. Article twelve, thousand dollars for hazardous waste day expense.
That's correct, they're in deficiency by eight hundred and nine dollars at this point.
Make a motion.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, the ayes have it. Article thirteen, forty-five, forty for the Abington Cultural Council.
Well, actually, the amount has...
Oh, I'm sorry, twenty-two seventy.
Has been reduced to twenty-two seventy, uh, because the finance committee took money from this article and put it into capital.
Okay.
To fund the cruiser.
We have a motion on article thirteen?
We go along with the finance committee's recommendation.
And a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Article fourteen, that's to accept the land up on Groveland Street.
This is the four point nine acres that we're receiving as a gift, um, from the Kenneth Newcombe State.
There's a motion to recommend approval? We have a second?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
And one abstention. Article fifteen.
This is a recession...
Borrowing authorizations, yeah.
Move we approve.
Motion to approve and a second, any discussion?
I would just like to amend, uh, Mr. Donovan's motion, and, uh, send a letter of, uh, thanks to, uh, the school department, um, in managing that, um, Woodsdale Green Repair Project to return one million thirty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars back to the town. I think you commented on that last week, John, but that's outstanding.
Yeah, no, they did a very good job managing that project. They, they've done a very good job on the projects that I have been involved with, with the school department, to manage them efficiently, effectively, and they've come in under budget, and co, quality has not been compromised, so they, they've done an excellent job.
Okay.
So we want to thank them for doing the job.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Article fifteen, there's a motion, it's amended, is there a second?
A second.
And a second, any discussion?
I think Tom seconded it, though, right?
I made the motion.
You amended it, you amended it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Article sixteen.
This is an, now, this is a new article.
Oh, this is, uh...
This is the article that Mr. Buckley had wanted on.
Right.
Um, and he so eloquently reminded me of the same, um, that...
We had taken a previous vote on this.
Yes, you have.
The Board of Selectmen had.
The Board has, and that's why I put it on.
Now, he's looking, now he's looking for approval from town meeting.
Right, and so that we can send to the great and general court of Commonwealth Massachusetts, the full force and voice of the town residents.
Of the Abington Town Meeting, yes.
Doesn't say great, just says general court, is that okay?
Not so great.
Make the motion to approve.
Do we have a second? And a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Article seventeen.
The finance committee passed over this article.
Have we heard anything from the bylaw review committee?
I have not.
You have not.
Have they met? The last time you talked about this, they were supposed to meet up until...
I have not heard to the contrary that they had not met, I'm assuming that they either have or will be meeting on this.
You want to hold off on that one?
For this until, can we do that?